At this time, I'd like to call our meeting to order. I would like to welcome you here this evening to our regular board meeting. We appreciate your attendance. We'll start with our invocation led by Pastor Gore, which will be followed by our pledge of allegiance. If you will, all please rise.
Heavenly Father, we are thankful once again for the freedom that we have to be able to come together to discuss the issues before our city and our town and communities. We pray that you would grant our elected leaders the wisdom to do what is right and the courage to make changes when necessary. But as you continue to lead us to be a community that everyone would be proud to live in and that we work together, Lord, to accomplish that goal, that we can all be safe, free, and enjoy life, and we will give you praise in all things. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Motion to accept.
Have a motion to accept. To have a second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, at this time, we have official comments. And this evening, I'll start with Commissioner Legg.
Certainly, I thank everyone for attending this evening. It's been an up and down week or last two weeks in the town of Hope Mills, especially our family, but the good Lord stepped in and bailed us out. Like I said, I'd like to thank everyone for being here this evening. Your attendance is much appreciated. Instead of looking out there and seeing a bunch of empty seats, it's glad to see it the way it is. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Mitchell.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming up. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protiem McCrory.
Thank you for coming out. It's good to have a full house.
Commissioner Skarola.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Thank you for being here. There's all now, Mayor. Thank you.
Commissioner Marley.
I don't have anything, ma'am.
All righty. Well, again, welcome for this evening. We do have this evening some presentation. The first presentation is Sound the Alarm Event, which is going to be May 21st. And this will be presented by Phil Harris, who is the Executive Director of American Red Cross. And we appreciate you being here this evening, and we're proud to be a part of this event that's taking place next Saturday.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Mayor. I was out here two and a half years ago, pre-COVID, and we talked about what we call "Sound the Alarm, Save a Life." So, we know smoke alarms save lives, and we've had some fatalities around the Hope Mills area. So, we're going to target this community and make it safer. So, we've targeted Saturday. We'll meet at 9:00 a.m. at the Parks and Rec Center. We're looking for about 100 volunteers, so we're about 70-some volunteers. But we're going to go out, we'll have a biscuit, have a tee-shirt, and then we'll go out in the community and make them safer. So, it's not only about the free smoke alarms, it's about the fire safety information. So, we're going to share that with families and children. Do you know to crawl below the smoke? Do you have two ways out of the house? And we'll give them a goodie bag with information. So, we need volunteers. The city's behind us. Chief, Fire Chief is behind us. Got neighborhoods identified. We need some volunteers. So, we've got flyers. I've got Janie McLamb with us. She's our volunteer recruiter for this area. So, we're talking to churches, civic groups, chambers, whoever can volunteer. It's a fun event, but it's only got one goal, is to save a life. Mr. Mitchell asked us to come to the Veterans Council, so we've got some veterans going to be involved. We just think this is a powerful event, the way to give back to your community. And that's what Hope Mills does. So, we've got a flyer we want to share with you, anybody that wants it. We've got poster that can, you can go in your business location. So, we need volunteers before we kick that off on Saturday. We use the United Way Day of Caring. They put door hangers in neighborhoods that we've identified and say, "We're going to be here on Saturday. Please open your door." With the Fire Department's support, it gives us a great advantage to say, "These are free alarms. We want to make your house safer and our community safer." Anytime, sometimes you see a stock photo. This is not a stock photo. This is a lady that lives in Cumberland County, up past Kelly Springfield, Goodyear. We installed an alarm, and she got out because of that alarm and her family. So, I think it's a powerful opportunity at Hope Mills. We're excited. COVID kind of sidetracked us a couple of years ago, but we'd love to have some volunteers to help and make our community safer. So, let us pass out this if you want, and then we want you to put these in your place of business because we'll have fun doing it. So, thank you so much, Mrs. Mayor.
Thank you.
Can I leave these here?
If you want, leave them on that back table back there. And then anyone here that wants to pick one up, and then what we'll do is take, make sure that we get them moved on after our meeting this evening, if anyone didn't take them all.
Great. Thank you so much.
All righty.
Look forward to Saturday.
I'll see you Saturday morning at 9:00. Next on our agenda is the presentation of the Mayor's Youth Leadership Certificates. And I want to let you know that normally at this meeting, or usually the meeting that we have prior to their graduation is when we present them. For those of you that aren't familiar with what this is, this is a group of young men and women from our three high schools, Jack Britt, Grace Creek, and Southview. They're selected by their principal, SGA, Key Club, ROTC, and they meet once a month. They meet the first Monday night meeting at 6:00 here in Town Hall. This particular group has been together for two years, and the reason for that is COVID. For one full year, we did everything by Zoom with maybe one or two coming in. And then this year, we've been able to meet more regularly, and we have had more participation. But the reason I wanted to take the time to tell you a little bit about them is that this group, even through this pandemic, they've been able to request from the state, a state charter for Hope Mills Youth Council. This is unusual because there's already one in federal Cumberland County. But because of our size and because of the three high schools working together, the state approved it. And last year, we acquired state status as a youth, a state youth council. They also did our bylaws. The youth did the bylaws to set up the organization. The youth also adopted Highway 162. They did everything through DOT. The youth also did our logo, which tonight, I went to Jack Britt, presented the logo pins to them. But just so you know, we've got strong leadership in Cumberland County. We've also got youth that hopefully we can keep them focused on what it's like to be a community service, and they'll come back after they graduate from high school. But there won't be a presentation tonight because this year, I'm actually going to each high school. And tonight, I went to Jack Britt. I'll go to Grace Creek on Wednesday night, and then Southview next. But this is an opportunity for the school to be known, to know that these youth have been a vital part of Hope Mills. And their goal this year is "Hope Mills Beautiful," and they worked on cleaning up Gilmott Cemetery. So, they've been very busy. Next, we have proclamation of the National Public Works Week. And this is, "Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the town of Hope Mills, whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste. Public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens, whereas it is the public interest for the citizens and civic leaders and the children of the town of Hope Mills to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. Whereas the year 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Resolved, I, Mayor Jackie Warner, do hereby designate the week, May 15th through 21/22/2022, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association, the Canadian Public Works Association, and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, our engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they made to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life." And I see our public works directors at the back. If you would please stand, Mr. Cisco. And I know that our, there's maybe another couple of members. I saw Beth Brown here with our stormwater. But I want to thank you for all that you do, and anyone else that's involved with public works, if you'll stand. But this is a week to celebrate them, and they do a great job for Hope Mills. So, if you will join me in a round of applause for our special department. May 31st, 2022, whereas Memorial Day was first widely observed on May 30th, 1868, and called Decoration Day to commemorate the nation's Civil War dead by decorating their graves, whereas Memorial Day evolved to commemorate American military personnel who died in all wars and was declared a national holiday by Congress in 1971 to be celebrated the last Monday in May. Whereas each Memorial Day, Americans remember the debt of gratitude we owe to our veterans who gave their lives for our country. Whereas thousands of American men and women have given their lives for their country, and many thousand more still bear severe disabilities and the scars of war, and by remembering these, we are reminded that the cost of war and peace is great. Whereas we continue to rely on our brave and steadfast men and women in uniform to defend our freedoms, we commemorate this noble American holiday. We honor those who fell in defense of our freedoms, and we honor them in our memory. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Jackie Warner, Mayor of the town of Hope Mills, North Carolina, do hereby urge all citizens to observe this day in honor and in memory of the thousands of American men and women who have answered the call of duty in defending the hard-won freedoms we enjoy today and who have sacrificed their lives in defense of their country. And I'd also like to ask our veterans and our active-duty military that are here in the audience today to stand. We're glad you made it home, and we also thank you for your service. We know that this is an opportunity for us to recognize the men and women who served us well. So, if you will please stand, those that have been in the military. Thank you. Next, we have an update from our Public Safety Building Project, and this is presented by Scott Garner, our architect. I'll ask you to come to the microphone at this time.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm glad to be with you and to give you an update on the building next door. You can see that it's coming along and that we are back on track. A lot of things are going on over there. They probably have 35 to 50 workers a day over there working, so things are moving right along. The roof is complete. The fascia, horizontal fascias are complete, and they've started putting on the metal panels, which give some identity to the building. The red identifies the fire side and the blue, the police side. So, you can tell which side is which. And the panels, not the panels, but the storefront in the center will be silver, and that is the shared space right there. So, things are going pretty well. Inside, the gypsum board is about 95% complete. Painting is half, 40 to 50% complete. The acoustical tile grid is up for the entire building. Lights have been put in it. They're putting in ceramic tile, porcelain tile, so that's a finished material. Plumbing is complete, except for a few tests. And for setting the fixtures, the mechanical and electrical are about 75% complete. So, things are moving, moving along very well. Tonight, we'd like to bring to you change order number seven. This is for changes in the desk and cabinets made in the police department, requested by the police department. And so, it involves cabinet work and some electrical work, and the price is $10,879. And so, there were some modifications that after we had the building put up, that the police department went in, and we also had a new police chief who saw the operation a little bit differently and wanted to make some modifications. These are really very, it's a very minor change, but we would ask for your approval on this tonight. Do we have questions about it?
No, sir.
Any questions?
Is the change order necessary?
Is it necessary?
Yes.
Is it necessary?
Yes. Is it required?
It will make the police department function better. They converted one counter into desk so that it could be used. They changed it so it suits their operation better. And yes, it's an improvement. It's an improvement for the police department.
Madam Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I have a question. So, let me just go back to it. It's asking for, hold on. For a storage? Is that my understanding? It was for storage or a record room or something like that?
Well, there's several changes. In the records department, the, there was a modification in the layout. And so, we had to change the cabinets for that, and we had to add some electrical receptacles for that. And so, that will make, that will make it function better. That's the thought about it. And in the police lieutenant's office, we converted one counter into three desks so that we can have three lieutenants operating there. They'll have a computer station, they'll have a drawer, a stack of drawers, and it gives them a place to work.
All right. Just so I can, I'm getting this correctly. So, you want essentially change from one desk into three desks? Is that what you're asking?
That's what we're doing in the lieutenant's office.
That's what you need?
In the lieutenant's office. That's upstairs. And downstairs, the police decided they would like to have two desks, furniture desks, in the front office instead of our counter. And so, we modified the counter. We had to modify two door openings, and we had to modify the cabinets in the record storage room to accommodate that. It's, as far as the cost goes, it's very much in line with what I would expect for the modifications that were made.
Madam Mayor, ma'am. Yeah, I don't normally support change orders very well, but I would like to make a motion that we approve $10,879 change order, and thank you for doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the change order in the amount of $10,879.
Mayor, I'll second that, but I have an item for discussion on this.
Okay.
And the manager, Drew, you might be able to answer it. It says that this change order money is coming out of contingency funds, and on this piece of paper here I have, it says we're 100% spent on contingency. Am I reading that right? If I'm not reading it right, let me know. Down at the bottom, it says contingency, contingency that says current budget, $2,522,230,12, and then amount remaining, it says, so is that saying we got 100% remaining of that money?
That's what we've allocated a contingency. The budget's three days.
Okay. So, the way I was looking at it, it said it was, it looked like to me it was spent, but it's not.
No. What happened is that amount would go up with this change.
Okay. I'm fine, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So, I have a motion. I have a second. Any other questions or discussion? Okay. All those in favor of this change order for Public Safety Center? All in favor, if you signify by raising your right hand. All opposed? 3-2 in opposition?
As we go through this process, I will tell you, there will be, this is a relatively small change here. The big change orders like for bad dirt or...
Can you speak up?
The sewer line and all that. We have passed that, I think. You never know. I mean, at any time, a change can pop up. And as we're looking down the road, there are going to be some other changes too that will come up. For example, the, just a minute. For example, when we designed this building, there's no way we could tell if the radios would work inside the building. So, we put in our contract to, for them to conduct a test, and then we will have to do some remediation. And that's going to come up because they conducted the test, and the radios did not work inside the building. So, we can correct that, and that's the way to do that, but that's going to come up. And we knew that was going to come up, but we didn't, we couldn't know the answer to it until after we did the test, if that makes sense to you. So, I mean, things are going to happen. This is a very complex process. A couple of places, we have added appliances. We'll have to add a receptacle for that. It'll be a small amount, but it's going to happen. So, we need to be prepared for it. Chief, would you like to?
Not that he wasn't explaining it, but he probably doesn't understand the operation. So, the counter that he's talking about is in the records bureau, where everybody that comes into their, to their front desk, into the entranceway of headquarters deals with our records, our two records specialists. It's only, it was only a counter like this. They have nowhere to store their computer, where they access records and stuff like that. So, anybody that comes into the building is going to be looking right down at all their work product, much of it, which is confidential. So, all we did is ask them to put their desks. They actually made this sit-down counter, a stand-up counter, so that none of their computers or confidential records are exposed from the public. So, their desks are now in the back of the office. This way, nobody that comes in can see that stuff, so that their work product is back here. When somebody comes in to get a report or something, they deal with them like a customer service kind of thing. And then they, they go back and they print up what they need to do. Because the way it was designed, that I wasn't included in it, I wasn't here, obviously, that was, it's just, it's not a good thing where people can look over the computer. And then the other thing, I think, that he mentioned was the lieutenant's office. So, we have three lieutenants, two that run patrol shifts, and one that runs our community policing thing. So, instead of having three separate offices for them, it's one office, we're just giving them each a separate workspace, as opposed to one desk and one computer, so that you all have access to their different piles and stuff. So, it was a confidentiality thing with the records bureau, and I think that was a major change. But they had known it was only a counter, but this big, very limited workspace, and people that come right into the building can see everything they're working on. That's why we requested.
But I think that, I think that it's much clearer for the police department to see once we get the building in place, and the chief and the assistant chief have been, have been looked at, and we talked about what would work better for your operation.
Yeah. We requested very little changes, but this, this I could see is a huge problem because if their, if their computer screens are right there, and if people could see, a lot of things are not, especially record records, they're not, they're not entitled to see. So, we would have to adapt it or stuff like that. Their work product could be seen anybody standing up at that because their counter is lower than the people looking in. So, we raised that to be a stand-up counter where they can address the people at the window, but they go back to their own desk and then. So, I, I don't know if that helps any of the, that's why.
May I just make a comment, Madam Mayor? When you come and you want to do the change orders, explanations like that...
Yes.
...make the world of difference. Saying that I want a different desk order, I want to change something, but have an explanation for, you know, it's confidential, that is the world of difference. I don't, I mean, I understand that some of this stuff comes up at last minute, right before meetings. Maybe you can get a little bit of discussion with the police chief beforehand, so you can brief it a little bit better because saying confidential, you know, having someone be able to look over the counter, world of difference, if that makes sense.
Madam Mayor.
Yes. The way that you explained it to me, I thought it was more of a cosmetic than a confidentiality thing. So, and I don't know in this case if it could have been a visual of what it looked like versus what you're proposing, because that would have been a little bit better, but it sounded like a cosmetic versus a confidentiality.
I think certainly he understands the options much better than I do.
You know.
Madam Mayor, ma'am. Can I make that motion again?
We just need to, they've voted.
And Chief Hodges, you have any problems with your side of the building?
No, sir.
Okay, good.
So, we have a motion.
We have change orders going to the end, but right now, everything.
That's good.
Thank you.
All right. So, we've had, we've taken a vote, and the vote was 3 to 2 against the change order. So, at this time, what we will need to do...
Is reconsider.
You can, you can move to reconsider, because as someone who was in the majority vote against it can move.
So, one of y'all three have to back up.
So, one of you three have to make a motion to reconsider.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to reconsider the motion that was made in the previous vote.
All right. So, we have a motion to reconsider the change order of $10,879 for the Public Safety Building. At this time, all are in favor. If you would signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed.
Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you very much.
Clarifications, yes.
And I appreciate the chief speaking up to, to offer his explanation.
Makes all the difference.
I would remind you that you have approved the design for the parking lot to the rear, and that will be a change order. That will be a large change order, but it will increase the amount of parking. What you approved was to have it designed. We will get it placed, and we will bring that back to you, hopefully next month. That would be a large, a large change. Also, I'm not involved in it, but the furniture for the building has been ordered or will be ordered, and that will be a substantial amount of money as well. That will not go through the general contractor, and that will not be a change order, but that's a separate purchase handled by the town. Okay? At this point, the building itself is 75% complete, or maybe a little bit more, but about 75% complete. And this is, the building is Phase 2, represents Phase 2 of the project. And we expect the building itself to be completed by the first part of September.
First part.
So, moving day will be coming up, and you'll move into it. That will open Phase 3. Phase 3 is the demolition of the existing fire station and running the sewer line that will serve the library. We've already approved that change order, that will serve the library down to Rockfish across the Ferris building and tie into the sewer system. And then we will have to build the concrete apron in front of the fire station and the parking lot to the rear of the fire station. At that point, the fire station will be running out the back, running out this way. And then, once we complete that, we'll start and run out to Gulfview. But, so, there will be a period of when we move, and then there'll be another period when we complete the Phase 3, which are the grounds, the parking lot and the driveway and the sewer line there. So, that's coming up. That will probably take two more months, so September, October for that. So, we're getting there, but it's a, it's a process, and we're getting there. We are in budget, and we are on time. Do you have any other questions? I'll be glad to answer them.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have public hearings. The first is case ZNG-002-22, rezoning of 5.21 plus or minus acres from CP Plan Commercial, C1P Plan Local Business, R6 Residential, and PND Plan Neighborhood District to CP Plan Commercial District CZ, conditional zoning for veterinarian office or to more restrictive zoning district located on the south side of Service Road 1112, Rockfish Road, north and east of Mulder Street, submitted by Kent and Julia Dean on behalf of Kent and Julia Dean Properties LLC owner and Michael Blakely on behalf of Drafting Design Services. And this is behind tab 2, and I'll turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin.
Hello, Madam Mayor. The things board members, I won't read the case heading again. This is a rezoning request to CPCZ. Ultimately, this is a 5.2-acre tract developed with... Ultimately, this is a five-point-two acre tract developed with an existing veterinary clinic right down the street from here. It consists of eight separate parcels, zoned under, currently zoned under the CP, C-1P, R-6, and PND districts. The area across the street from the proposed development is also zoned under the C-2P district. The overall area is comprised of ONIP, some commercial, and there's a very large residential, established residential area to the south. The reason why the advocate is proposing to reconstruct this is because he's being negatively impacted by the road widening of Rockfish Road. It's pretty much eliminating the entire existing building. So, he's simply reconstructing this building on another portion of property he currently owns directly adjacent to the side. But in order to do that, he ultimately has to rezone some of the property. He asks for some, some alleviations under this conditional zoning in terms of reduction of setbacks on Mulder Street and Bolton, because if you enforce those setbacks, he'd have setbacks, commercial setbacks in the rear, commercial setbacks off of Rockfish, and commercial setbacks off of the extended Bolton Drive that is gonna be extended to Rockfish Road as a result of the improvements on Rockfish. So, he's asking for a reduction of setbacks just on Mulder and Bolton, and he's asking to waive the sidewalk requirements off Johnson and Mulder. If you recall, we just moved to relocate funds for, uh, moving away from sidewalks that we were gonna put on Johnson. So, staff is understanding, understanding that request as well. In terms of the Southwest Land Use Plan, it's not compliant simply because the plan calls for mixed-use development in this area and low-density residential. And that doesn't mean that we don't support the proposal. It just means that it's not in compliance with the future land use. This is showing the existing zoning as stated. The property is comprised of R-6, CP, C-1P, and PND. You see the makeup of the area and surrounding area. This is the location of existing water and sewer. This is your land use plan. It does show the mixed use, uh, in low-density residential designations. And this is your proposed site plan. If you can see, he does not actually anticipate any driveway access off of Bolton, Rockfish, or Johnson. The actual main interest is to the site will be out, from the rear, as you can see on this proposed, uh, site plan. These are your site photographs. This is a photograph standing on the subject property, looking directly across the street. This is a view northeast along Rockfish Road. The subject property is to the right side of the screen. This is a view looking northwest along Rockfish Road towards Town Hall. The subject property is on the left side of the screen. This is a view directly of the subject property. And these, this is your staff recommendation of approval, which is located in your packets. I'd like to open up the floor to any questions that you may have.
Chancellor, are they gonna take this building down one-hundred percent?
Yes, the building has to be completely demolished. And what he's showing you on the site plan is basically the reconstruction of the facility.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I think we knew this was coming when we heard the sidewalks.
I will say, this is the first development that we've seen that is a direct result of the widening of Rockfish. I know we got some other stuff going on, but this one was the first. Domino, I know Mr., Dr. Dean has been dealing with DOT for an extensive amount of time. He has actually, him and his architect and his team has met with our plan review team several times. So, we vetted this very extensively, and we actually had those meetings prior to the submission of this request, so that we could work through some of the issues that he's facing.
I'll make the motion. Okay.
You open up a public hearing.
And ZNG zero zero two.
You gotta open up a public hearing.
Public hearing.
Oh, that's right.
Um, I'd like to point out, too, the architect and the dean are in the audience if you do have some questions, but we do have to open up.
Okay.
Make a motion, public hearing.
Okay, this time, is there anyone that'd like to speak against this proposal of rezoning? Is there one here that'd like to speak in favor of this rezoning?
Motion to close public hearing.
All right, so, motion to close public hearing now. I'll, Mayor Proten.
All right, and ZNG zero zero two-two, the Town of Hope Mills Planning Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from CP Plan Commercial, C-1P Plan Local Business, R-6 Residential, and PND Plan Neighborhood District to CP Plan Commercial CZ Conditional Zoning for a veterinary office and fines. The approval is an amendment to the adopted Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan 2013 map, and the Board of Commissioners should not require any additional requests or application for amendment to said map for this request. The following change and conditions was considered and amended the zoning ordinance, zoning map, to meet the development needs of the community. A portion of the parcels that are part of the request currently operate as a requested use. A road riding and project is requiring the use to be redeveloped, and the parcels have access to public water and sewer. And this rezoning approval is reasonable and in the public interest because the site being conditionally zoned to limit the impact to surrounding properties to place it more in harmony with the surrounding zone and uses, uses while providing adequate buffering and space for vehicular and pedestrian movement.
Have a motion, have a second.
Thank you.
Have a motion and second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Thank you, sir. Next, we have case CNG dash zero zero three dash twenty-two, rezoning of one point two-two plus or minus acres from C-1P Planned Local Business to C-1P Planned Local Business District CZ Conditional Zoning for all allowed C-1P uses and requested reduced setbacks or to a more restrictive zoning district located in the southeast quadrant of intersection SR eleven thirty-one, Cameron Road, and North Carolina fifty-nine, South Main Street, submitted by James A. Davis Jr. on behalf of himself and Davis Family Trust, and Sonya Taylor on behalf of Franklin D. Taylor heirs, owners, and Thomas Lloyd agent. I'll turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin.
As stated, this is another rezoning request for conditional zoning. The site is located at the intersection of Cameron and South Main. It's a one-point-two-two acre vacant tract. It's the former vegetable stand that used to be there, that has operated for years. It's currently zoned under the C-1P district. So, even though this is a rezoning request, I wanted to highlight this is not your traditional rezoning from residential to commercial, because it's also comprised of four properties, parcels, but it's surrounded by Cameron Road to the north, Stone Street to the east, Honeycutt, to the south, South Main, to the west. If you were to enforce fifty-foot front yard setbacks on all those streets, the lot is pretty much unbuildable. And that's the main reason for the conditional zoning request. Actually, that's the only reason why they're doing it. They would still have to come back for a site plan approval when the site is ready for development. But, and we took this through plan review several times, where we pretty much negotiated and let them know what would be acceptable to staff. Reduction of setbacks was the main goal that they were in pursuit of. There is residentially zoned properties to the immediate east and south. The subject property is located in a well-established commercial node. It's not in full compliance with the Southwest Plan, but you'll see that in the later maps. This is the existing zoning. You can see that it is basically a corner that all four pieces are zoned commercial. This is your location of water and sewer. This is the land use map. So, if you notice, one half of it is mixed use. There's a portion of it that has low-density residential land use designation, which makes it not compliant. We still are in support, full support of the development. This is just a plat that was ultimately filed for that shows, that shows you the makeup of the four lots and the four surrounding streets. And these are your site photographs. This is a photograph on the subject property, looking directly across of South Main. This is a view looking south along South Main. The subject property is on the left. This is a view looking north toward, along South Main. Subject property is on the right. And this is a direct view of the subject property. And here are your staff recommendations of approval. I'd like to open up the floor to any questions that you may have.
Any questions, Mr. McLaughlin, from the board? Would you like to have a motion to open a public hearing?
I think some of us gonna have to find a place to buy fruit.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Okay, have a motion to open public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak against this proposal? Is there anyone here that would like to speak for this proposal? Yes, sir?
All of you who come by here, I'll just, I'll just send you in. With the weight of your my hand, we need, we need this property, uh, for, as far as.
You have to talk in the microphone. If you identify yourself too, so please.
Yeah, my name is James Davis. I am the owner along my brothers and sisters. I spend an awful lot of time working up there. I'm getting tired of weed eating. I'm ready to get it sold, even though it is a very good location for the fruit stand. People love it, hate to lose it for that reason, but my family is getting the ages, ages of all our kids that grown up there. And if we're ever gonna do anything, we need to move on. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close.
Okay, any other discussion, any questions you have?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve case ZNG dash zero zero three dash twenty-two.
You have to read all that.
Do I need to read all that, Chancellor?
Yes, all that has to be read.
Yes, you do.
Hold on, I was hoping, I was hoping I could get through it.
I'm sorry, you have to read it all.
Come on, Chancellor.
No way, don't this.
No.
You gotta read it to the record.
It has to be read into the minutes.
All right. In ZNG dash zero zero three dash twenty-two, the Town of Hope Mills Planning Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from C-1P Planned Local Business to C-1P Planned Local Business slash CZ Conditional Zoning for all allowed C-1P uses and requested reduced setbacks and fines. A, the approval is an amendment to the adopted Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan 2013 map, and that the Board of Commissioners should not require any additional requests or application for amendment to said map for this request. B, the following change and conditions was considered in amending the zoning ordinance, zoning map to meet the development needs of the community. The recombination of these parcels will provide a more practical parcel for the development of a non-residential use that will have sufficient space for vehicle, pedestrian movement, and parking. C-1P also allows for general light commercial uses, which is what the mixed-use development desires. C, this rezoning approval is reasonable and in the public interest because the site is located at a heavily trafficked intersection, and the district request is in harmony with surrounding zoning and existing land use along South Main Street corridor.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Thank you.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Next item, case ZNG dash zero zero four dash twenty-two, rezoning of point sixty-nine plus or minus acres from R-ten Residential to C-2P Plan Service and Retail, or to a more restrictive zoning district located at forty-two seventy-one Legion Road, submitted by David Kaufman owner and Will Swearingen, uh, agent.
All right, as stated, this is a straight rezoning to the C-2P Plan Service and Retail District. Subject property is a point-six-nine acre vacant tract, currently zoned under the R-seven-five Single Family Residential District. It's directly adjacent to the existing Kaufman Commons Shopping Center. Large commercial development directly across the street is the neighborhood Walmart. The subject property is located in a well-established commercial node. South U Middle School is located to the rear. And the Southwest Land Use Plan calls for heavy commercial at this location, and this proposal is actually in compliance with that land use recommendation. You see here, the subject property is outlined in black. You can see the established commercial, but established residential area to the rear. But that is South U Middle, so that's not residential per se. See the location of water and sewer here. You don't have a site plan because this is a straight rezoning, so you're really just contemplating or considering all the uses that could be allowed. I have indicated in my staff report, the engagement we've had with the developer, they're talking about tire changes and basic, basic service for vehicles. I know there was some concern about the recent project we approved on the other corner. That is oil-changing, so it's not necessarily exactly the same, but I would like to discuss some overlay things that you guys, but that's another conversation. This is your land use map from the Cumberland Land Use Plan that shows the property outlined in red is in compliance with the heavy commercial land use designation. These are your site photographs. This is directly across the street from the subject property. This is northeast along Legion Road, subject property is to the right. This is southwest along Legion Road, subject property is to the left. And this is a view of the subject property. This one isn't as long as the other ones, but staff recommendation is for approval. I'll open up the floor to any questions that you may have.
Okay, this time, have a motion to open public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing.
Do we have anyone here that would like to speak against this proposal? Anyone that would like to speak in favor of this proposal?
Motion to close.
Motion to close. Any other questions from the board?
Yes, how many tire shops would they make that in our area?
You don't make me answer that. Um, I'll, I'll address the elephant room. I have been talking to town manager and several of you guys about my displeasure, not necessarily with this project, but just a saturation of the vape shops and the tire shops and the used car dealerships. So, I would like to offer to you guys that I wanna start a few work sessions to talk about the adoption of some overlays in the Town of Hope Mills. There are, there are, the ability that we have, or we will have, that we don't currently have now, if it's a property someone acquired, and they wanna rezon it, I have no control over the use they're trying to do. What an overlay district would allow me, the authority to do, is go into a certain area and strike down specific uses we don't want in this area, so that we can keep our industrial developments in a certain area. We can keep our commercial developments in a certain area. Car dealerships are not meant to be on Main Street in Hope Mills, in my opinion. So, we can go into certain areas and develop a system of overlay districts. It will come with specific input from the overall community, but we want to be able to have that ability to not necessarily deny development, but you're removing the option of some of these less desirable types of uses. I would like to, we're talking in terms of the timing of it and when you guys wanna move forward, but I think the time is now to go ahead and start moving forward. This stuff development is at an all-time high, and right now, we have no control to stop this stuff from coming in. I think that's the best avenue for it.
Madam Mayor, I agree that we should move on this ASAP.
Yeah.
May I ask questions? All these places we're talking about, uh, the annexation of a building or changing use of, they're all required to install sidewalks, is that correct?
If it requires, if you remember, I'm glad you brought it up. We did create a threshold in an ordinance where if it's new construction, the sidewalks will be required. If it's more than fifty percent renovation of the facility, sidewalks will be required. But if it's just an, unlike this, this will be brand-new construction, so sidewalks will be required. If it's one where someone's rezoning something, it's an existing building they're utilizing, they're not talking about doing any renovation, the sidewalks will not be required.
Unless they request a way of, as conditional request, because Dr. Dean's property said they're not gonna put sidewalks. And then, you've got the property that we just approved, they're not gonna put sidewalks on Honeycutt or, or the back, or Stone Street. So, there is within some of these, a request for no sidewalks.
Yeah.
I was just concerned that being in the close proximity of all the schools.
I think there's already sidewalk there, though.
If there is, God bless.
We're looking at that, but like I said, this is a vacant site, so they would have to put.
There's a sidewalk there already.
Good.
Then we have.
Okay, any other questions? All right, do we have?
Motion.
Motion.
Somebody have to put a motion.
Have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion. In ZNG zero zero four twenty-two, the Town of Hope Mills Plan and Staff recommends approval of rezoning requests from R-ten Residential to C-2P Plan Service and Retail District and final request consistent with the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan 2013 designation of heavy commercial as strip commercial areas are recommended along Legion Road and the site has access to public water and sewer. Approval of this request is reasonable and in the public interest as the district request is in harmony with surrounding existing uses. As zoning as is, not is transitioning into a commercial hub as road improvements and surrounding commercial development is completed.
Have a motion, have a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Next, we have Annexation A twenty-two dash oh-three Bundles Table Property pin number zero-four-zero-three dash forty-seven dash seventy-three thirty-six and zero-four-zero-three dash forty-six ninety-seven twenty-one and zero-four-zero-three dash forty-six nine-five-three-six containing thirty-three point nine-one acres, more or less, on a survey filed in plat book zero-zero-one-four-eight, page zero-zero-five-five.
All right, I'm obviously staying up. I don't have a presentation for it, but this, I'll just give you a brief example. You should have a staff report in your packets with a memo, if you notice, because we have, we have a lot of these annexations, but on the hearing date that we're ultimately approving the annexation, you always get the memo from the Plan Review Staff that outlines the recommendations of the Department. You should have that and staff report is in. This is adjacent to the existing Black Bridge Village subdivision off of Black Bridge Road. We have met extensively with the developer who's in the audience about their development. They still have to come through subdivision review, but we feel comfortable taking this in. And if you look at the staff report, we are requesting the organization to begin the initial zoning process of R-seven-five if the board so chooses to adopt the annexation. But this is the final hearing. I just wanted to point out what you guys do have in your packets.
Mayor question?
Yes.
So they're, they're asking for development under R-seven-point-five?
The reason why we went to R-seven-five is because that's the zoning of the adjacent residential development, Black Bridge Village, and based on their preliminary design, they're gonna, they're talking DOT about an entrance off of Black Bridge Road. It's the main entrance. They're connecting to Black Bridge Village subdivision to the east and they're also gonna connect to Steeple Chase. So it's almost like they're developing out this existing neighborhood. And we, and we, we kind of encourage those secondary interests and things that nature is required in the fire code. But we, we don't have a site plan in your packet, but we have met extensively looking at the adjacent subdivision and making sure that it's in harmony with the zoning of that existing area.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have public hearing?
Motion to open.
Okay, public hearing. Is there anyone present that would like to speak against this annexation request? Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this annexation request?
Motion to close.
Okay, so now is there any other discussion from our board?
Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Approval, I make the motion to approve Annexation A twenty-two dash zero-three and authorize the staff to begin initial zoning process to designate the development under R-five Single Family District?
R-seven-five.
Oh, R-seven?
Yeah, R-seven-five.
R-seven-five, Single Fam- Family District.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Thank you, thank you, sir. All right, next we have public comments, but tonight the public is being quiet. Nobody spoke very much for, for any of this and there's no one signed up for public comments. So next we go to our consent agenda. Is there anything you'd like moved from our, or pulled from our consent agenda and moved to new business? If not, do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Have a motion to approve consent agenda, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second, any other questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. All right, next we have consideration acceptance of the bid for Trade Street Building and this is behind tab twelve, and I guess I'll ask our town manager to give you details on that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the twenty-first, the council voted to, to open solicitation of a sealed bid on Trade Street. It was a former museum. Did you see a high bidder in the amount of thirty-five thousand? So assess value on the property for about thirty-two thousand. So the, so the council is either accept or reject the bid. I would, I would state that if you do reject it, you would probably look at realtors and do a normal real estate thing, which would cost the town would be, and the normal closing and all that. So it's, it's up to you, this, the high bid was thirty-five thousand. The staff think that's publicly about what you're gonna be offering for the property. It's right in line with what the assessor has at. It does bring it back into the tax value of the city, going out of the town and back into the private sector. So that is some tax revenue. And the financial services company is the one that provided the.
And it is as is. There's nothing else that we're gonna do to it, because I know it needs flooring, it needs cabinets. There's no kitchen really in it, so it would just be as is, so that would, okay.
Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes, sir.
I guess Don can answer this question better than anyone. Don, how much do we have in that building at the present time? Do you know?
Yes, about ten thousand dollars.
How much?
About ten thousand.
Didn't we give about fifty for it? That's a lot more than ten.
So, so I, I do want to interject, so, so the town paid fifty thousand for the property.
Okay.
With the sidewalks and enhancements and all that. I actually quote the financial report, it's about a hundred and ten thousand.
Wow.
So the bid of thirty-five thousand is probably a market value bid regardless of what the town has invested. I think, you know, staff's recommendation at the retreat was to divest of the property because it is gonna take a lot more resources and effort to get that to a usable status for the town and they only have an occupancy of five people. The town really doesn't have the need or use for it. It's unfortunate that historical, you know, things happen with past boards and committees and we inherit those decisions and we make the best decisions we can with the current information and staff's recommendation is to accept. It's up to you as to what.
We must be careful and not take hits like that on the chin very often. That's a considerable loss for the citizens of the town.
And if we reject the bid, what would be the other requests of action?
So we would probably reach out to local real estate. They would just give a ten, the last try to see if someone's interested in purchasing the property. Then it would go through a normal process of real estate sale. I think the town would still want to stick with the NASSIS condition. They don't want to get into materiality first. It's not allowed to be used as residential because it's only one-story business in that district. So it does have to be some type of retail or commercial use.
Do you think it's something worth pursuing, or?
I think, you know, that, that bid's a reasonable offer. I think it's an acceptable bid for what the town has the value at. It's gonna be like, I don't know, if you put a bunch of money in and overbuild it to the area, it's probably not gonna incorporate those investments.
Right, and I think the property next door is also for sale and it hasn't sold. I don't know what they're asking for it, but, and it, it courses and needs much repair, but that would be two side by side that would be vacant if that one.
It's hard to tell if they would move quickly or not, but the real estate market is kind of a, it's kind of just an older odd piece of property.
An odd location.
Scott, is that, is that price negotiable with the bidder?
No, that, it's a sealed bid, so that's the high bid. We only bring in the high bid, we don't, you know, tell you other, how many, you just presentation like the high bid. If we were to go back, it's required under statute to advertise it for thirty days or more and to bring it back in the statute, so you do have to follow that process for letting a real estate disposal for the town ownership.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm not in favor of turning that building loose for thirty-five thousand dollars. I would like to see it come back for, be bid on again or whatever the process is.
Is that something that is possible is to?
Madam Mayor, it's like any, anything you just for sale or, or send personnel, when you hire people, you get a snapshot in time of the interested people at that timeframe. It's possible we get a higher bid, it's also possible we get a much lower bid or no bid. You might get the same person that bids again, you know, we don't really know. I think in line with what the assessed value is, it's, it's a reasonable offer. I understand that, you know, if you look at property like your vehicle, you know, blue book, this, this is kind of in that blue book acceptable value. We don't know that anybody's gonna go above that too much.
Fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Off the purchase price.
I'm gonna take a loss either way. What you say the fair market value is?
So the assessed value is roughly thirty-two-five.
And the bid is thirty-five?
We had about a hundred and ten thousand.
So just for clarification, so if we put it back out for bids, we can still do the option whether it gets good, a better bid, or a worse bid? We can still put it on the market after that allotted time period?
You, you can, but as the mayor suggested, the property that's almost an identical building right next door. I don't, I don't know the timeframe, but it's been for sale for quite some period.
It's been there for the same amount, longer than it was for sale when we purchased that building.
It's been that long?
Yeah.
But we do have to respond to this bidder as to your acceptable or rejective. It's not a terrible acting aggression. You can, you can bid it as many times as you want to, or you follow the statuteary process of thirty days, that is, just to see what bid you get.
Yeah. Realistically, though, for, for that area, we have, we have overspent. And so we're, we're not gonna get the money back. It's just. Yeah, I think when the board that purchased the building, there was not a good understanding of what it would cost to renovate the building and those costs came after the fact. So it's kind of a lesson now to know that before you do something like that, you've got to make sure you got all the, all the answers. And I think it was just a matter of the, the purchase.
I would add that, you know, the town started adding ramps and things for ADA accessibility, where it'd be a publicly used space. That's a different requirement than.
Right.
Just to carry on, say, I don't know, do we know how much the other house, the other building, how much that was listed for?
I know that at one time it was looked at, but I don't know what the va, what the price was for that house. Anderson, Colonel Anderson's house that's adjacent to that.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I was told the asking price on the house next door is fifty thousand dollars as well.
It's been for sale the whole time this, we've been, been in ownership of our house. It, it was on, it was actually for sale when we purchased. I don't, yeah, but I'm not sure. I haven't seen any advertisement for that particular house.
And we have to respond by what timeframe?
By now. A reasonable, I mean, I would, the thing about bringing back to another meeting, but I, I think if, you know, think it's a valid fair offer, I would accept if you don't, and then you go back with me to examine. I, I don't think, you know, usually in these processes, if you're bidding, the same person might come back for a little over. And, and, you know, they're not required to hold their initial bid. It's hard to say, but someone could put in, but it's, it's pretty fairly priced. Generally, I would say, you know, it's an acceptable offer and you want us to do more work with it and continue.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Because a person still would have to do a considerable amount of work to get that building running, wouldn't they?
You know what? We have to cut our losses. You know, tough, that's why we was put in this position to make tough decisions. And we decided to retreat and we said, go out and do something. So guess what? I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the bid so we can move on and make some other things happen, take that money and make something else happen with it. It's a loss that we gotta eat. Unfortunately, stuff happens.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of accepting the bid for the house on Trade Street signify by raising your right hand. Those opposed signify the same sign. Okay, three to two, so the motion passes. Okay, next we have new business and that would be consideration approval of Resolution R twenty-two dash fifteen, setting a public hearing date of June sixth for Annexation A twenty-two dash oh-four, and this is behind tab thirteen. And this is annexation for, the contiguous annexation of Beers and Trees Property on being all of Lot One containing six acres, more or less, as shown as plat entitled Corner Subdivision Edition Lot One. So we just need a.
Motion to approve Resolution R two, R twenty-two dash fifteen.
Have a motion to approve the resolution, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Next on our agenda is consideration of acceptance of annexation petition A twenty-two dash twenty, A twenty-two dash oh-five, approval of Resolution R twenty-two dash sixteen, instructing the town clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the application, and this is behind tab four. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, motion to approve.
To adopt.
I'm sorry. Oh, excuse me, to adopt the resolution directing the clerk to investigate the annexation petition received under GS one sixty-eight dash thirty-one. And to approve, that's it.
All right, I have a, a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Do we need to add to that a motion to investigate sufficiency of the application?
I'll, I'll add that, that's needed.
So we've added to that previous motion the sufficiency to investigate the application. Thank you much. Next we have.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. Did we do part two of tab five? Will we give the permission for the town staff to request R-seven-point-five district?
Yes, yes, sir. We did. Next we have consideration approval of a full responder contract with Pierce's Mill Volunteer Fire Department and Cotton Volunteer Fire Department. And these are in your packet. Do we have any questions in reference to these full responder contracts? And the way we're growing and, and the expanding, especially out toward exit forty-one, I, I would just to say to the board that this is important because of the, the need to be able to cover all that area. And of course Cotton would be out in that direction and Pierce's Mill would also be responding a lot of it on the other side of the lake. So have any questions?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask our fire department chiefs, if they could, some questions about it. Now, I read over the, the contracts. What, what is your recommendation? What, what is your recommendation?
Um, definitely, uh, full responder contract would be beneficial for the town. It needs to be beneficial for the fire department and the town.
Okay.
Um, there are definitely areas that I would recommend that we contract. Probably the majority of it would be out toward exit forty-one. Uh, the Morocco Drive, Sand Hill Road, uh, Corporation Drive area. One of the questions I, I had was, um, what Pierce's Mill presented. Basically, what I got was PIN numbers, and I had to go in and find out, associate the PIN numbers with an address. I don't know if it was an oversight, but it's kind of confusing because, uh, my recommendation would re, would be to contract with Pierce's Mill for everything. Basically, I ninety-five Muscle Cars north, I guess you would say, back towards Fayetteville. One of the areas was a, um, Hope Mills Retirement Center. Uh, the other area was like twenty houses in the Pinewood Lake subdivision. I don't really know why we would cut a subdivision in half. But that's not my decision, that is yours.
Now. When these, when these contracts were discussed or investigated, um, who essentially did the investigations for the, as far as the contracts? And what would be recommended as far as, um, full contracts or partial contracts, I guess it would be called?
I have no idea, ma'am.
So. Okay.
I know when I got involved, it was when the contract, proposed contracts were presented with the PIN numbers that they would want to contract for.
Okay.
That's the only involvement I had.
So you weren't involved in the planning process or anything with the contract as far as, um, before these PINs, like how, how, how often were you involved in the process?
As I stated, when I got, um, copies of the proposed contracts and the PIN numbers associated.
So you were only given proposed contracts, you weren't involved in the actual process at all?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, as best referred to our town manager.
So, you know, that kind of got here, I don't wanna go back over the history, but obviously we're building a large campus that are next to. We have some ISO issues as we grow on the exterior borders. With our current budget, obviously, we have a contract in place with Stony Point until June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. I have, I met with, you know, the fire chiefs, the boards, all the surrounding jurisdictions. Bayville uses this template, this model, to do all of their connections to areas they're growing into. So this is the same exact contract. The thing is, is it's, it's improbable that this town of Hope Mills has any ability to do substations in any of the churches.
I agree.
So with that being said, I think it's important, we have had partnerships with these entities in the past. For whatever reason, those obligations, those commitments have, you know, the county going to look closest dispatch sequencing and how they do, they, they do a lot of runs in our area, they do a lot of runs in their area. So we negotiate, you know, looking at some of those areas currently. I'm not too concerned about today's prices, I'm concerned when we build these neighborhoods, these places outside of our current proximity to, to, to our building. What happens, you know, Cotton, Stony Point, these places have large apartments, they're as big as our apartment.
Madam Mayor.
So.
He's, he's not finished.
Okay.
But, but wait a second, so, but this is your opinion, wa, was he involved in this process?
The chief has been involved since he's worked here for three, four years, so.
Were you involved with this contract?
Not this particular contract.
So.
The chief, the chief is one of my employees.
Yes.
And the chief has been invited, and we have met with all of the divisions, all of the other boards. So at direction of this council, and, and, and not to be offensive, but the council and its high members initiated this process, which I've been involved in and bringing it to you for consideration, so.
But.
So I am bringing you a contract that I think is presentable to the council.
I understand, however. He is the subject matter expert for our town and our fire department contracts. And if he's getting this after the fact, when the contract was already drawn up. Say again?
The chief has been presented all of this all along.
Presented, or was he involved?
Presented, he is one of my.
So he was presented this after the fact, why wasn't he involved as a?
He was invited to the meeting we had here, and he has been involved with this, he did do his own research. So this is a town issue, this is.
Uh, no, well, you just said yourself, he's your staff, so why wasn't he involved in this planning process?
I think publicly, it's, you know, I have a presentation from all of these chiefs in order to present to you a presentation of what is in terms of us gating these contracts. It, it's important that you hear the whole story on this, and not just look at the dollars and says, because this is an extremely affordable contract for us versus providing the services.
I think it would be beneficial for the town to enter contracts.
To enter contracts. Now, do you believe that as far as like, now, there was two contracts, there was Pierce's Mill, and there was the, um, what was the other?
Stony Point.
Stony Point. Do you believe they should be?
No, ma'am.
This is Cotton, Stone, we already have a contract with Stony Point.
Well.
That was used as a template, and that template actually was created because of the arrangement with Fayetteville, because Fayetteville does this, especially in the outlying areas. It also is important for our, not only our ISO rating, but it's important when we build these new housing developments for you to say, where is the closest fire department? Because it helps for insurance for houses for homeowners. You can, you always have to know where a fire hydrant is, but you also now have to know where the fire station is.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
May I, may I speak?
Yes, sir.
Ever since I've been in office, y'all always heard me say the subject matter expert. Contract one oh one, business one oh one. When you put together a contract, there's a certain group of people you bring to the table. Your subject matter expert should always be at the table. Your subject made, your subject matter expert should review to find a product to make sure it's something that, because by him being the chief, by him being the subject matter expert, he's the one that needs to look at this contract and say, this is a good contract, I think it's something that the town of Hope Mill need, and this is what we should go with. And with that statement, what say you, chief?
I would say the contract with Cotton, definitely. I do have a question about two of the properties.
Okay.
Uh, one is a single residence on Church Street. The other one is, uh, uh, an area at Parkton and, and South Main Street that we've served for years. Definitely four is closer, but it's two miles from our station. The only question I have with Pierce's Mill, my recommendation, like I said, would be everything north of I ninety-five, uh, Muscle Cars on Legion Road. That's because splitting up a, a subdivision, and it's also an area that we're closer to.
Okay.
So, but, again, that decision is entirely up to this board. I just, I, I think you would want to, to look at my absence, i- if you have not, and see for yourself, but that's, uh, the contracts definitely would be beneficial if it's beneficial for both parties.
Yes. And, and I agree, cause stop soliciting, contracting is the only way to go this day and time because of everything that the town just pointed out. However, you just made a very important statement. It has to be beneficial for the station over here, for Pierce's Mills, for Cotton, and the citizens. And with that being said, what do we need to do to fix it so that it's something we can live with and get it done? We just need to get it done.
So I would point out to you that the contract is more than just the property and the cost. Cost is.
Yes.
From what we're getting, it's, it is ongoing.
Um, yeah.
The issue to me is the collaboration and cooperative effort that all of us, chief has to look at them, and we have to work with them. We gain a lot through this partnership. We don't have the means, it doesn't make sense to build our own substation.
I agree.
From all these entities. So for the near future, I mean, obviously, I think that it's a good reestablishment of that goodwill. It's costly, it's a good fiduciary decision to make for the taxpayer. And I also think it goes a long way to reestablish the commitment we have to these folks that should. I, I was a year for the history, I don't, I don't know all the history, but I can say that we have to work together, and our team needs to work with their team, and that's just what we do, and it has our, it has my recommendation, but it also, it was one of the things I was tasked with giving them that brought me here. That may or may not be all of you, because the elections change over people, and that, that was one of my tasks, they asked me.
Madam Mayor, now, I, I have one more, um. So it was my understanding that yourself and Commissioner Marley were speaking with these other departments, um, why wasn't he used as the subject matter expert?
So I met with all of the fire districts, with the mayor prior, early on when I was retired. I did go with Commissioner Marley, and I did have the chief in this room with all of them as well.
How many times?
One time each, so the mayor once, Commissioner Marley once, and the fire chief.
But isn't that a conflict of interest, having an elected official that has voting power, going to negotiate a contract?
I don't, I don't believe it would necessarily be a conflict of interest, as long as he's not financially benefiting from it.
But Pierce's Mill is financially benefiting from it, so that would be a conflict of interest. So he's essentially. Say again?
If there's a direct financial gain, if we entered into this contract, then it would be one that would prevent it from occurring.
So there is a direct financial gain, because that contract's for fourteen thousand dollars. So why would we even include him when you have the fire chief right there? And you got the assistant one right there.
I could have been directed to do this without any participation from the council or the mayor. I felt it was beneficial of the relationships they have and the history to include him.
But, okay, you have a duty to your staff, he is not your staff, why was he included? Why was he included?
The conflict would only be in voting on it, it wouldn't be.
But. So all he has to do, uh, Commissioner Scrolly, in this particular instance, he just would be, uh, excused from voting. Because he would, it would, so in, in other words, it would, the, the vote would be left up to the remaining commissioners.
I, I understand, but it shouldn't have been done regardless. You have two fire chiefs, I mean, I, I understand where you're coming from. However, he won't have a vote in this, however, you have two fire chiefs. They should have been involved, not a commissioner. You, we stay in our lane, you should stay in your lane. Does that not make sense?
I was directed to.
Directed by who?
By the council that hired me, I was directed.
I, I'm not the council that hired, who directed you?
The council, the council that hired, uh, Commissioner Scrolly, and I do believe this is inappropriate now. You've had your speech, you've had your time.
Point of order, madam mayor.
Point of order is, you've had, you've talked more than anyone else up here.
Point of order, madam mayor. He is an elected official, why was he involved with a contract when it doesn't involve, when it directly involves him as far as pay involved, when you have two fire chiefs?
I'll tell you why, because Commissioner Marley has extensive communication and relationships with all of these.
Uh, yes, okay, and he financially involved in this. Who gave you, who told you to involve him? Who told you to involve him?
I, I don't recall that, I think.
You don't recall?
No, I, I, I participate and I talk to each of you individually on multiple issues. On this issue.
And financial issues, um, financial issues that affect him personally?
The contract, the actual contract, though, Commissioner Scroller, Scroly would be, would have been done by our, uh, town manager. Commissioner Marley would have no influence or involvement in the contract itself.
But he does have influence, ma'am, ma'am.
Well, okay, but where we are now in time is, do you have any questions directly related to the contracts before you?
Yes.
Okay? And then I need to make sure that the other commissioners have an opportunity to also have floor time to ask questions to.
Madam Mayor, my question, my final question is, who authorized Commissioner Marley to take part in these contracts in far as seeking out information, as far as getting these contracts put together? Who gave him authorization?
I would doubt that he has not been involved in doing that. Chief Johnson, the other three chiefs were involved.
I don't know how to say this a different way.
Let, let me, let, ma'am, ma'am, let, let me clarify this for you, okay? I've already, several years ago, and I can produce the email, I can get it. I was investigated by Cumberland County. They investigated me for the same allegations that you're making now. Uh, the district attorney gave his, um, his, uh, final ruling on it. There is no conflict of interest for me to have any, in any part of this, because I do not directly benefit from this contract. I am a salary employee like every other employee there, it's no different than Commissioner Lee being an umpire over here and us having a contract with the company that he works for umpiring. So what I would suggest is you back up and do a little investigation of your own, since you know so much. There's no conflict of interest here, and we need to move on with this.
Standby, I wasn't done with my question. So if we were told, because when I asked you about this, I was told, uh, it wasn't a quorum, so we didn't get notified, but he was obviously notified about the mutual aid contract.
I'm a commissioner of this town, I was sitting in, I was sitting in.
And I asked about it, and I wasn't negative, negative.
I was sitting on any meeting of this town that I wanna sit in on.
Enough, enough. Thank you both.
Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes, sir.
We would be in big trouble when we lay our head on our pillow if we were not covered by service from one of these fire departments. It's worked out fine for several years, a long time since I've been on board. We're working with professional firefighters, although some of them may be volunteers. They're professional firefighters. I don't see a problem at all with us having this contract and having them on our side. Like I said, where I live at the other end of town, if Stony Point wasn't close to me, I'm not that far from Hope Mills, but that makes a big difference. Where I live, die, or lose property, or lose a ma, family member. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the contract uh, between the fire department and the town. Is that appropriate?
Yes, sir, have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second, I would just like to offer also that during the time of Hurricane Florence, Hurricane Matthew, when the waters covered the bridges, when you couldn't get across the lake, when the, when the dam was down, you look at the times that I can tell you that Cotton Fire Department came to the rescue because they were there. When you couldn't get to us because the lake and the flooding and all the problems. I don't know what we would do, and I can tell you that our town, our fire department is still in charge. It's just our fire department needs those arms to help us because we're growing so fast. And I can't tell you the importance that I see being somebody on the other side of the water, what happens when Legion Road Bridge is down, Camden Road is down, when you have three oh one down, and there's no way of this fire department getting over there. And that has happened, we have had times where that has happened. And there was even a proposal at one time for us to put a fire department on Legion Road just because of the necessities when you have an issue getting to the other side because of water. We're surrounded by water, and you don't realize it till you have a hurricane. And I can tell you that that's, that's my say so, but further discussion?
Madam Mayor, I just have one question, a simple question. Do we have contracts that we need and we can live with? That's all we need to know. Do we have a contract that's gonna meet the needs of the town, of the citizens? Do we have a contract that's going to meet the needs of the town, of the citizens, and the individuals that's going to be operating the contracts or working on the contracts? That's what we need to know.
I would say that full-service contract benefits their ISO rating as well as ours. I think it's, for the amount of money we're talking now, it's good stewardship. And I, I think that in time, if it gets pricey because of our assessed values and the growth, we'll, we'll have to reexamine that, you know, service model and how that works and what the contract negotiation is. But I think for now, it's, it is acceptable, and it is, for a lot of reasons, it's, it's a-
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
One other thing. In the future, contracts like this, it's not that hard. Business 101. Advantages, disadvantages, if we subcontract out, or if we do it ourselves, what it's going to cost us. I mean, then we got it right there, facts, black and white, laid out to us, the disadvantages and advantages.
We do have a written presentation for you by the chiefs. I'm not saying that you want to go through all that.
No. So, wanna, based on the way the contract is now, chief, so we have a contract that will meet the needs and the requirements of the fire department and both substations, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, a motion for the floor that's been seconded?
May I speak?
Yes.
From what I'm gathering, you don't disagree that we need con, a contract, but you're saying that some of the, some information needs to be modified in the contract. That's what I'm gathering. I'm not, I don't, I'm not hearing you say we don't need the contract.
No, ma'am, I'm not saying that at all.
But you don't completely agree with everything that's in the contract?
I don't necessarily agree with everything that is up for contract. But that's just me. It's neither here nor there.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Any other concerns?
Call for the vote, ma'am.
Okay, at this time, all those in favor of accept, you ready? All those in favor of accepting the contracts before you, which would be with Pierce's Mill and Cotton Volunteer Fire Department, all in favor signify by raising your right hand.
Just to clarify from a legal perspective, I believe since Commissioner Marley, as he's, as he's pointed out, that he's salaried and does again direct benefit in this contract.
Okay. So all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That's-
I have a question.
Okay, you're gonna, are you voting?
Yes.
Okay, so that's three. Those against, two. So it's three to two. Okay, do we have, what's, you have something now, or?
No, no.
You okay? All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we have our reminders, and of course, we've got committee meetings coming up. Monday, May 30th, we will have observance of Memorial Day, and that will, the town offices will be closed, and we do have this ceremony planned at our Veterans Memorial. Our next regular meeting is, or not a regular meeting, but our budget here, budget workshop is tomorrow, and that is at 5:00. And we do ask, request that you bring your budgets with you, and also any other concerns that you may have. Any, we have our, any staff comments, or any, first of all, is any, any questions in reference to our manager's report? Which, do we have a manager's report? Yep. Any question? Staff comments?
I would add that public works, I'm going to start the D O T for any questions.
Okay. It was, it was considered that Andrew Barksdale has actually been the contact PR person for D O T. So Andrew Barksdale was who W R A L, actually, they represented him in reference to the road changes here. So it might be that Andrew Barksdale would be, he has spoken to our board previously at different times, so he might be a contact also. Any other comments? All right, at this time, we are going to go into a closed session, and we have been asked if we can clear the meeting room because we will have the closed session actually in this room. So at this time, if you will, and we appreciate you coming, we thank the fire department members that are here, and we appreciate your support and your continued support.
Maybe I'm going to call them, uh, read the stuff.
After they get out. Well, we're going to make a motion, but we're going, I was going to wait till we, because I knew it was going to have to take some time.
But you don't have to make a motion to close.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to make a motion to close. Then Dr. McCray will make the motion. Yep.
Oh, I was going to ask you, how are you being? How you seeing this city's elections? Are you doing all right?
Yes, we are in session. At this time, do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for a closed session pursuant to 1438, 31811A7 to hear reports on investigation of alleged criminal conduct, and pursuant to NCGS 14331811A6 to discuss a personnel matter, and NCGS 14331811A3 Attorney Client Privilege.
Still being recorded?
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. At this time, we'll go into closed session. At this time, I'll call our meeting back to order. Do we have a motion?
Is, what, am I moving to seal the minutes?
Yeah.
I'll read it.
Go ahead, go ahead, roll it.
Do I have to make a motion to this?
Yes.
I make a motion to seal the minutes of the closed session until such a time as the release of the information would no longer frustrate the purpose of the closed session, and further, no action was taken.
Have a motion, have a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
Madam, may I make another motion?
Okay.
Hey, the meeting be adjourned.
And we'll see you tomorrow.
There ain't nobody going nowhere right now.
We'll see you tomorrow at 5:00.